Good afternoon and welcome to the Thursday, February 14, 2019 work session of the Henrico County Public Schools Board. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion carries. Well, the agenda is approved. I should have begun with the most important business and as remind everybody that it is Valentine's Day. And has everybody gotten their sweetie or significant whatever something for Valentine's Day? Raise your hand if you hadn't so we can make sure and let your spouse or whoever know that you waited to the last minute.
[laughing]
That's exactly right. So, well, I guess we can stay late then. If everybody's got what they need, we can just stay as long as we need tonight.
That's not getting much response.
Not so fast. Okay. All right. Well, at this point, it's appropriate that we move into closed session for discussion of matters covered under items A1, A2, and A7 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the following: the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees; the admission and discipline of specific students, including a request for religious exemption from compulsory education; in consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation involving employment matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the school board. Is there a motion that we move into closed session for those purposes?
So moved.
It's moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. We'll now go into closed session for those purposes. Thank you. Members of the Board, at this point, it's important that we certify that only those matters that were disclosed in the motion to go into closed session were discussed in closed session. Is there someone who will so move?
I will move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor of certifying the closed session that only those matters disclosed were being discussed in closed session were in fact discussed. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Madam Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. For the first item, I have withdrawn the recommendation related to student case number 17-18-S-12 related to a student code of conduct violation for further review.
Thank you, Madam.
Next item, the Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance of student case number 18-19-Re-8 based on bona fide religious beliefs. And as always, the names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. Members of the Board, is there a motion regarding the Superintendent's recommendation for religious exemption from compulsory attendance for 18-19-Re-8?
All right. I was trying to cut you off. Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
The Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel for the 2018-2019 school year.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the administrative appointments. Is there a motion to adopt her recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Board has just approved the following administrative appointments: Tiffany Farmer, Director of Operations and Student Services at an Achievable Dream Academy Highland Springs Elementary School; Erin Conme, Assistant Associate Principal, Laburnum Elementary; Courtney Ellis, Educational Specialist in Exceptional Education; and Andrew May, Human Resource Specialist in Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And we, on behalf of the Board, we think all of those who interviewed and conducted the Boards to determine who these folks were, we're very excited about them. And you're bringing them forward at the next meeting?
At our next meeting, at our monthly meeting, we'll have an opportunity to meet the new appointees.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And for the next item, we have an update related to the proposed annual financial plan. And Mr. Sorenson is going to come forward to provide an overview.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I do want to walk through a couple of slides really to update you on what is going on at the General Assembly. And of course, we'll answer any questions that you guys have on the budget. And there is a public hearing scheduled for 6 o'clock tonight, of course. But I did want to walk through, I think I have four slides for you. Just walk through those. So the House of Delegates and the Senate both released their budgets. They came out, the Council came out for that on Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon. So I did want to walk through some of the 2020 amendments in their budget. So the House of Delegates, their amendments would reduce our state funding in the general fund by about $400,000. In our special revenue fund, VPI, the House of Delegates eliminates funding, so that's the million four reduction in our special revenue fund. The Senate's budget would reduce our general fund by about $1.8 million. And in VPI would reduce, I'm sorry, special revenue would reduce the VPI plus program by about $400,000. So walking through those a little bit. School counselors, the first category in this chart, column on the left has what our current funding ratios are. Then it walks through the Governor's Budget, the House amendments, and the Senate amendments. So you can see that the House did not change what the Governor proposed in his budget, but the Senate did change their funding staffing ratios for school counselors. And it's indicated by school level on that chart for you. Compensation supplement, there were changes in both the House and the Senate amendments. So the Governor, again, he proposed 5% over the biennium. So that's what we've been working on to this point. The House did change that a little bit, so they're leaving 3% effective July 1, 2019. And then an additional 2% would come on effective January 1 of 2020. So it's about six months in there where, before the extra 2% comes on to get to the Governor's 5%. And so that would reduce our funding. We'd have to pay for it later on because it gets annualized in subsequent budgets, but for 2020, it would reduce our funding. And then the Senate, they gave a little flexibility to school divisions, so they will provide funding, if you give at least a 3%, and up to a 5% increase over the biennium. So for school divisions that can't afford the full 5%, that gave them some much-needed The other two things I want to walk through, the supplemental lottery, that's an account we have, the state funds with lottery proceeds per pupil. And you can see the per pupil amounts, the current amount, again, in the left-hand column, and then with the Governor proposed, the House and Senate, so there were changes to the Governor's recommended budget. And that's money available to us to use for any purpose that we see necessary to operate the school division. So those three things are the general fund impacts, the VPI plus is, to us, is a special revenue fund. So the Governor, currently, that's a federal program. The Governor proposed state funding to carry it forward in 2020. The House eliminated that funding, and the Senate required a 25% match. The Governor's budget did not require a local match. The Senate version does. That's the decreased funding in that amount. I do want to point out, it doesn't say on the slide, but the Governor's budget is not at the current level, but it is, it is a substantial amount to carry the program forward. We'd have to look at how we're spending that money currently because he did reduce it a little bit from our current amount. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on these items or anything else that you all have regarding the budget.
Thank you. Members of the Board, are there questions? If there, none from the others. I do have one about the lottery funds.
Yes, sir.
I thought, where does the lottery money go if it doesn't go to schools?
There are several state programs that are funded with lottery proceeds. This is just one of those programs.
So, so does it still go to education?
It does. Yes, sir. It's just a different category in the state budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But all of the lottery funds go to some education?
That is correct.
Category?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's just, okay, understood. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Yes, Mrs. Cox.
Do we have an idea of when we will know better, how this all is going to shape out?
We should know by the end of next week.
End of next week? Yes, okay.
All right. Thank you. So update, but stay tuned.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's nothing else?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Next, Dr. Bray is here so that he may both share an update of proposed changes to the middle school math pathways for the 2019-2020 school year, and then offer a chance for questions before I'll be asking for your approval of this proposed change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm pleased to bring forward a proposal for the modification of our middle school math pathways curriculum for the 2019-2020 academic year. The proposed changes to the current pathway reflect our continued efforts to increase both access and opportunity for students to reach Algebra I prior to the ninth grade. The revised mathematics pathway addresses content changes reflected in the 2016 standards and provides the necessary curricular supports to ensure student achievement. The proposed revisions also bring us into alignment with other divisions throughout the region. On the left side of the graphic, you will see our current pathway for a student entering middle school, having completed Grade Five math in the fifth grade. Previously, under the 2009 standards of learning, students who successfully completed Course Two in the seventh grade were considered Algebra Ready. Changes set forth in the 2016 math standards of learning reflect a more scaffolded approach with some student content previously taught in Grades Six and Seven now shifting to the Grade Eight Course Three, which is now representative of a true pre-algebra course. In order to guarantee continued student success and access to upper-level coursework, we propose two pathways representing one option per grade level in Grades Six and For the first pathway, students are identified either by teacher recommendation or by parent request. The recommending teacher can be either the general education teacher or the special education teacher. Once identified, students must meet three of the five placement criteria. The criteria for placement includes successful completion of Course One, passing SOL scores for Grades Five and Six, NWEA score of 230, student work characteristics aligned to the math process standards, such as the ability to problem solve, and teacher recommendation. Identified students who meet the placement criteria would then take the Accelerated Math 78 course in Grade Seven, thereby allowing the student to take Algebra I in Grade Eight. For the second pathway, similar to the first, students are identified by teacher recommendation or parent request. Identified students must meet two of the three placement criteria.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yes, sir.
Because some folks may follow along with this otherwise. That first pathway you discussed on the slide that's presented here, is that the one on the right as we look at the slide?
So if we're looking on the left for the first pathway?
Right.
You'll see the arrow going over to the Accelerated Math 78, which is highlighted in red.
So that was what you just finished describing for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
For the second pathway, similar to the first, students are identified by teacher recommendation or parent request. Identified students must meet two of the three placement criteria. Criteria for placement in the Summer Bridge Program include successful completion of Course Two, passing SOL score on the Grade Seven Course Two SOL, and teacher recommendation. Identified students who meet the placement criteria would be eligible for the Summer Bridge to Algebra Program. Consistent with the Henrico learner profile, the Summer Bridge Program offers parents and students voice and choice in terms of delivery format by offering both a face-to-face and online option. The in-person bridge will be delivered through our existing Summer Essentials programming. The online option will be available through a customized course delivered through Edge Annuity. Students taking the online version will also have additional support through an assigned Summer Essentials math teacher. For students who select the online format and struggle, a face-to-face option would still exist through the second session of Summer Essentials held in mid-July. It is our intention that through the new Accelerated Math 78 course and the Summer Bridge to Algebra programming, that students now have multiple opportunities to reach Algebra I prior to the ninth grade. It is also our goal to provide the curricular support and scaffolds necessary to ensure student success as they access the more rigorous high school curriculum. At this time, I'm now happy to take any questions or clarify any of the content.
Thank you very much. Members of the Board, are there questions? Our clarification requested. So I have, go ahead, please.
What's the participation like in the past with this during the summer? I'm just curious about the summer component.
The summer, the Bridge to Summer is a brand-new component for us that currently doesn't exist.
Okay.
So one of the things that has changed is that Course Two. So if I go back to our current pathway, under the 2009 standards of learning, Course Two, if you successfully completed Course Two, you were considered Algebra Ready. That wording is actually in the state documents. With the 2016 standards changing, Course Three really now becomes more of a pre-algebra course. So content previously taught in Course One and Course Two, some of that content is now shifted. This brings about the need for that Summer Bridge. And one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that our students have increased access to that Algebra I course. And so if you look currently, there's only really one option in our current pathway, and that's Course Two. Under the new proposed pathway, you'll see an option for students Grade Six and Grade Seven.
How about teaching staff? We?
Yes, sir. We have the Summer Essentials, teaching staff is in place. We have funding for that existing.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Cox.
How many students do we project having the summer, for the Summer Bridge programming? 200, okay. From all over the county?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and the prerequisite, then, the teachers will choose which students need to?
Teacher or parent request.
To encourage, okay. Or teacher request, or parent request?
Teacher recommendation or parent request.
That's good. Thank you.
And again, that teacher can be the general educator or the special educator.
Very good. Anyone else? So what are we doing to make sure that parents are aware of this new path?
Well, contingent upon your approval, we will advertise it on the website. We have engaged our counselors within our school, and our math specialists will be engaging our teachers so that we can really start identifying students to take advantage of this pathway.
Because it's not, it's not a great universe, it's not a tremendously large group of students that we really are looking at it. I mean, it's just those students in those particular grades where it would work so we can air it down there. And then the teachers ought to be able to identify rather quickly, but also think that it needs to be very proactive in making sure that our parents are aware of it so that they know. In effect, this is the first gate that a student has to get through in order to meet, in order to participate in some of those higher-level courses that really can spell success beyond high school. So we don't want, parents often say, "If I'd only known." So we want to make sure that they do know. So anything that we can do to help in that regard, I know that, and I see Mr. Jinks there willing to help as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I have one comment. I'm wondering, in that vein, if this would be appropriate for our back-to-school orientation, like starting, because I hear this all the time, "If I'd only known," like fourth and fifth grade, so that when we're, have our captive audience of our parents, that we tell them these options so that they can do their planning for middle school and high school courses. I don't think it's too early to start that in the fourth, fifth grade timeline. I mean, I've actually had parents ask if they could have more information regarding specialty centers at that same time because they are thinking down the road. So add that to the, to the information we give them early on. Everly do.
And to Mrs. Augbrun's point, particularly our fourth and fifth grade teachers in those, not just back-to-school, but in the parent-teacher conferences, because those are the parents that are often say, "If I'd only known." And there, there may be some students that are, that if they know that this is an option, the parents can help push and pull, and everybody works together.
Right.
It's a little bit like identifying students for gifted services in that, you know, the parents are involved, but the teachers are involved, but also the parents. And not everybody has, that second child always has advantage because you know what you missed with the first one. And sometimes I think we do that as well. So whatever we can do, Madam Superintendent, to help in that regard, I think the Board would encourage it.
Yeah, absolutely. You bring up excellent points. It's one thing to create access and opportunity entry points such as this with the Summer Bridge programs, but making sure we're building awareness throughout, really, it's the K-12 experience. And elementary school is not too early to begin having those conversations and helping students see a trajectory and a pathway and understanding the courses that they select in middle school have an impact. So we're in conjunction to this, looking at how we can strengthen our academic and career planning process to involve students and parents earlier in these conversations, so...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I completely agree with what Dr. Cashwell was just saying because we need to make sure that parents understand the importance of that Algebra Two and building the foundations for that successful pathway on up through high school. And it starts, starts down in elementary schools, we all know. But I think that many parents don't really understand. They may be thinking of that model of when they were in school and that Algebra I was, you know, ninth-grade class or such. And so it's really important for them to understand that the Summer Bridge will help their student with the foundations.
Final question for me, anyway, is, so with the Summer Bridge program, I understand it's sort of two components. There's an online component and a face-to-face component. So where will the face-to-face component be offered? And how are we making certain that it's offered even if you have a pocket where there's maybe just a handful of students that are interested or that are, that need that additional assistance, to make sure that there's that opportunity across the board?
So it would fall under our existing Summer Essentials programming, and that programming is offered at three different locations throughout the county.
Okay. And I just, and I think that's great. I think that one of the things we've got to remember, these are middle school students, and it becomes difficult, often particularly not, it's across the county, but there's great distances between places where I live. And we don't have the traffic, but we do have the distances. And it becomes, with a middle school student in particular, sixth-grade student or a sixth, becoming seventh-grade student, I, many parents think of them as they're, they're just souped-up elementary students, sort of Mrs. Cox's point. And so the notion that somehow I'm going to now begin to have to transport my student to these various places, we just need to be mindful that because it is a gatekeeping, a gate that you got to hit, that we make sure that we don't have a blind spot for those students that are having, for whatever reason, difficulty assessing that. So whatever, we just need, if we need more, if we need more locations for some reason and more access to it, we should anticipate that and try to make it available.
Yes. Should the Board approve the pathway change and the addition of this option for students, we'll definitely make sure that we're thinking through the access points to make sure students have quality access.
Thank you. I think it's, I think I can, I guess this is an action item, so we'll be calling for a vote on that.
Yes. If, once we're finished with questions, yep, I would. Are we?
Are there any, is there any other information anyone needs before we make a decision and you're able to cast a vote? If not, then do you have a recommendation for us?
All right. So given the overview and your opportunity to ask questions on what was presented, I recommend that the school board approve the proposed change to the middle school math pathways for the 2019-2020 school year, of course, beginning this, with that Summer programming piece.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the middle school pathway, math pathways?
So moved.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Before we leave that, I would just reiterate that a great plan executed averages, an average result. So it seems like a really well-thought-out opportunity. And now that we've adopted it, it's got to be executed with fidelity and aggression.
Yes. Well said. And we'll bring back some information related to our next steps, advertisement, et cetera, as we move forward.
And maybe at that point, if we could also bring back what you would suggest when we review it in a year, is it successful or not? You know, not only so we identified there's possibly 200 students, but, so what, how are we going to say now? What are we going to look for to determine whether we spend our time and money wisely?
Certainly bring back some attendance data and also how well that prepared students to the next step in their pathway.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. For the next item, the Superintendent recommends that the school board accept the $495 grant award from Virginia Professional Educators to Verina High School.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
We're making sweat there.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor of adopting Superintendent's recommendation regarding the Virginia Professional Education Educators Grant Award indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Next, I bring forth a recommendation that the school board accept the $7,270 grant award from No Kid Hungry Share Our Strength to School Nutrition Services.
Members of the Board, you've heard Superintendent's recommendation regarding the No Kid Hungry Share Our Strength Grant. Is there a motion we adopt her, regarding her recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper, Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And no child should be hungry any longer.
Thank you. And a final grant opportunity this evening, I recommend that the school board accept the $60,000 grant award from the Virginia Department of Education to Glen Lee Elementary School.
Members of the Board, you've heard Superintendent's recommendation regarding the Virginia Reading Corps Grant Award. Is there a motion regarding her recommendation?
With the pleasure, I make a motion.
It's been moved that we adopt Superintendent's recommendation by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Right. Thank you. And next, we have a number of items under operations related to the award of construction contracts. And Susan Moore will come forth should you have any questions as I bring each of those items forth. For the first item, there's a request that the school board award construction contracts for the dedicated outside air unit replacements to Chamberlain Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amounts of $373,000, $373,811 at Ash Elementary School and $366,157 at Ward Elementary School, and to JR Mechanical LLC in the amount of $219,430 at Baker Elementary School.
Madam Superintendent, JRC Mechanical, just for the record, so we're clear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That was a mouthful.
That was easy for you to say.
I'm telling you.
All right. Members of the Board, we've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the contracts for outside air unit replacements at the schools she outlined. Is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. And for the next item, hopefully the acronyms and dollar amounts will roll more smoothly. I request that the school board award construction contracts for HVAC renovations to Chamberlain I request that the school board award construction contracts for HVAC renovations to Chamberlain Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amount of $45,847 at Freeman High School and to Air Tech Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $349,500 at Shady Grove Elementary School.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard superintendent's recommendation regarding the construction contracts for HVAC renovations at these two schools. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next is a request that the school board award construction contracts for electrical service replacements to Electric Controls and Maintenance Incorporated in the amount of $105,800 at Fair Oaks Elementary School and to Ebenezer Electric LLC in the amounts of $80,216 at Highland Springs Elementary School and $33,770 at Mayberry Elementary School.
Members of the board, you've heard superintendent's recommendation regarding awarding of the construction contracts for electrical services at these schools. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries.
And the final item I bring forward this evening is a request that the school board approve the storm water management agreement between the County of Henrico, Virginia, and the County School Board of Henrico County, Virginia, at Freeman High School.
Members of the board, you've heard superintendent's recommendation regarding approval of the storm water management agreement at Freeman High School. Is there a motion that we adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. And I believe that concludes the superintendent's matters tonight.
It does. That concludes items. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, members of the board, we have any unfinished business? And there being none, how about some new business? Mrs. Cock?
I have something. Just wanted to share some good news that I think many people have probably already heard from the RTD and out on social media. But I had the pleasure yesterday of spending several hours at the General Assembly, and I was there while the House Bill 1652 was passed through the House, and that is our school calendar bill, as we call it. So it has passed through both the House and the Senate, and we'll be waiting for the governor to sign. It is the bill that eliminates that post-Labor Day school start requirement. And so I know, I've been on the school board now eight years, and we've been working on it for eight years, and I'm sure it was eight years before that. And there were some people, some legislative liaisons and such yesterday, that, you know, it's been 25 years that we've been working on this. There is three components to that, and I was just going to mention them briefly. And first is that school boards that do not currently have a waiver may start school up to 14 days prior to Labor Day and must close schools from the Friday before Labor Day through Labor Day. So it's four days. School boards that have a waiver, that is not us, in case anybody in Henrico County was wondering, that they can continue with their waiver. Okay, so I've skipped that part. And then lastly, school boards that have had a waiver pursuant to blah, 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 they get to continue it. And so the whole gist of it is that's 14 days before Labor Day is the soonest anybody there can start. So this, this really does give us the opportunity to, you know, have that conversation now, not in a theoretical sense, for our constituents. It helps to level that playing field for our all students in Virginia because, as of last year, over half of the students in Virginia are starting there, you know, two weeks before Labor Day. So it's, we really can carry on some meaningful discussions now in our, about future school calendars. And I just would like to thank those people, and of course, Bev Lammy, our amazing legislative liaisons, but so many people that have gone down and testified and have helped through the years and advocated for the so-called repeal of the King's Dominion Law.
Well, thank you for that report and for that, that good news. And I, and I just would add and point out that while they're, during a, if we were to head that way during a transition period, there may be a time when the summers would be shortened until we make the full move, if we were to decide to do that to the 14 days. But ultimately, the time off from school would be the same. It's just shifted by two weeks. So because I have heard folks say that you're shortened in the summer and to acknowledge that there would be a transition, but that ultimately it would be the same amount of time. So, and also pointing out that we've, we've adopted the calendar for next year, and so I don't think that there's any reason to, that we would revisit that instead, because first of all, unless it's emergency legislation, it wouldn't come into place until July 1st. And so for those who are within the sound of our voice or the ability to read it on a screen, there will be no exercise in Henrico County to revisit the 1920 school year calendar. But as Mrs. Cock said, it does provide us opportunity to begin the discussion for future years. So thank you for that report.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything further? If there's not, then you see on the board, we have upcoming meetings. Of course, at 6 o'clock today, we're going to have a public hearing. And then on the 28th of this month, we're scheduled to have our work session beginning at 2:00, followed by our monthly meeting at 6:30. And those times, the time for the beginning of the work session is subject to change given the volume of work we have to accomplish. There being no further business, we will now adjourn with the understanding we'll, we'll have our next meeting at 6:00 PM today. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the February 14th public hearing that's been called regarding the plan financial, the financial plan. The next item, or this, the only item on our agenda tonight is for the public hearing to solicit public input for, on the proposed 2019-2020 annual financial plan. Some citizens have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to come to the podium to do so after we've completed the list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly identify him or herself. Please give your name and your neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have four minutes in which to speak. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means that you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking promptly when the light turns red. The school board is here tonight to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers, but we will carefully consider your input and your comments regarding the financial plan, and we appreciate your attendance here tonight and providing your input. Before we come to our first speaker, we're going to ask Mr. Sorensen to make a brief presentation regarding an update, I guess, to where we are with the, with the plan.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. I just want to watch through a couple of slides that were from the presentation we presented to you guys back in January to go over the budget at a high level before we receive public comment. So again, enrollment is a very important piece of our budget. It's a large factor in our revenue and our expenses. We are projecting basically a flat enrollment, not only in the 2019 school year, which goes into 2020, but also for the next five years. Operating funds, again, we do have four operating funds. In total, those funds add up to $621.9 million. That is a 4% increase over our current 2019 adopted budget. The largest piece of those operating funds is the general fund at $505.5 million. And just, while I'm on the slide, just one thing, the school nutrition fund, it does show a decrease of $2.7 million from the adopted budget to the proposed budget, but that is, again, getting the budget more in line with our historical spending and revenue trends. This is really the same information, just in a pie chart. The pie chart on the left is the current year, the 2019 adopted budget, and the pie chart on the right is the proposed 2020 budget. Its current budget's $597.8 million, and the 2020 budget, as it's proposed, is $621.9 million. So focusing on the general fund, because that is the largest piece of our operating budget, again, pie chart on the left is 2019, pie chart on the right is proposed 2020 budget. This shows our expenditures by categories of reporting to the state. So the instruction is the largest by far category in our budget. It is increasing from 75.7% in the current budget to 76% even in the 2020 budget. The revenue, and this will be updated as we go through the process, but it does show that the county and the state are our two largest funding partners. You'll see that across the Commonwealth. In 2019, the county provided 43.5% of our budget, and the state provided 54.3%. We don't have those exact percentages for 2020. We'll, again, get those as we go through the budget process. So we are tonight, on February 14th, our public hearing. We do have several steps to go through before the budget becomes effective July 1st of We will meet even with, with our teachers, who are on the 19th to go over the budget. We'll down, February 28th, we'll come to you for approval. Then we'll go to the county for consideration of the board supervisor's budget. On March 20th, we will meet with the board supervisors at 9:00 at the County Government Center to go over the budget in detail and answer any questions they may have in, in your approved budget. April 9th, the county will have their public hearing at the County Government Center in the West End. The 23rd, the board supervisors will adopt, they're scheduled to adopt the budget. May 9th, it will come back to you for approval, and then on July 1st, once everything is approved by both the board supervisors and the school board, it will become effective as the 2020 operating budget.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that, so we do have two people signed up, or two groups of people that signed up ahead of time, and I think they may have just come in. Mr. Bukowski? If you would come forward, sir, and you'll be followed by some students as well.
I'm actually, I'm here with Facebook, we all students talking, but we signed up my foot and he's down.
That's fine. If, if the group would come forward, you missed the preliminary remarks. The Presentation, you'd be provided four minutes. There's a timekeeping system. It'll be green when you begin. It will turn yellow at three minutes, and we ask that you stop speaking at four. So hopefully your remarks are tailored in that regard.
We did.
Okay, so.
Very familiar with that. Just so you know, we are the Blue Cheese that are based out of Deep Run High School. This is one of our seniors who's going to start off, and then we have some of the people who talk.
All right. And as each student, if you begin, would you please make certain and share your name and your grade level, please?
All right. I'm Piyush Chisani. I'm a senior at Deep Run High School, and we are Blue Cheese Robotics, a team based out of Deep Run High School. One of our team's core values is to advocate for STEM education, and today we are advocating for the Math Science Innovation Center. We have been a team for 16 years and currently have 83 active members. We would love to be here in force, but unfortunately, this is the middle of our build season, and we're not able to all be here because we have to have our robot completed by Tuesday. So almost all of our team members over the years have attended programs at MSIC, and our team believes that our hands-on learning, learning programs are the most effective way to teach STEM, as do most educators in the field. Classes at MSIC do just that and are even more relevant today when they, than they were in years past. I would like some of our team members to share some thoughts with you on the subject.
Hi. I'm Leo Bukowski. I'm a 10th grader at Deep Run High School, and I'm also on the robotics team. And the opportunity to be exposed to STEM programs at a young age is critical in getting kids to pursue STEM careers. When I was in elementary school, I took two, I took a lot of classes at the Math Science Innovation Center, two of which were robotics classes, and I loved them because they were hands-on, and I actually got to build robots, which is an opportunity I'd never had before. And then again, in middle school, I took another robotics class that was actually sponsored by the governor's school here, and that really opened me up to robotics, and it's one of the reasons that I joined the robotics team. And I can honestly say that without the Math Science Innovation Center's camps, I would never have joined the robotics team, and I would not be where I am today. And I also feel that STEM will be very critical in creating a 21st century workforce in Henrico County and in Virginia. The programs offered at the Math Science Innovation Center are very hands-on, and they allow the kids to actually experience and do what they're being taught in the classes. And that's really good because it, it's tailored towards engaging the students rather than state and national testing standards. They get to experience topics that aren't covered in schools and anywhere else, really. And I feel that these programs are really important. They can also be experienced as field trips, so they actually get even more hands-on experience. They can talk to experts, and they're just really good all around. And these camps are also taught by teachers, and at no cost, the teachers can go and hone their craft while they're not in school. And I just think that that's really important, and I think that all this is really important, and I don't think that funding should be cut for it.
Thank you, Leo.
Hello. My name is Alec Ritchie, and I am a freshman at Deep Run High School. When we required about why Henrico County would not be able to fund Math Science Innovation Center, we received an email from the school board that stated the monies that would be used to fund the Math Science Innovation Center will instead be used to reduce computer fees from $50 to $25. Please don't reduce opportunities for children to learn about STEM in an effort to reduce fees. The Math Science Innovation Center especially touched me when I took a class for circuitry. I really learned with my friends how to interact with computers and mess with them and make things work on my own accord without having to look at a standardized project. As our school board, you should be protecting educational opportunities, not taking them away. When you take educational opportunities like the Math Science Innovation Center away, you put Henrico County students at a competitive disadvantage in the job markets of today and tomorrow.
Thank you, Alex.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sahil Jaiswal, a sophomore at Deep Run High School. I think that the Math Science Innovation Center is absolutely imperative for the well-being and success of our students. First off, according to a study posted on the Virginia Department of Education website, the STEM cluster is expected to expand its employment in Virginia by 6% through 2024. It provided approximately 67,000 jobs statewide in 2014, and is expected to provide about 4,000 more by 2024. If Henrico is reducing or limiting options for STEM education today, then these jobs will go to other municipalities or remain unfilled. For me personally, the Math Science Innovation Center genuinely touched me on an extremely deep level. Initially, I really had no idea what they were, but then I got engaged with their programs, the science fair in particular. I submitted a project not really expecting, you know, anything at all. I thought I'd lose. I thought I'd go there, learn something, come back, you know, with some new knowledge. And I actually won. I won second place in my category of zoology, and this got me hooked on scientific research. Now, this year, I've submitted to the Math Science Innovation Center Science Fair, Metro Richmond Science Fair, again, and I'm planning on submitting to the Virginia Junior Academy of Sciences. Next year, I'm making it my goal to submit my project to the International Science and Engineering Fair so that I can expand my knowledge, expand my horizons, and open up new doors of education for myself. During the program itself, I also was able to very effectively determine what I wanted to do in my future. There was a physics PhD present at the science fair who was giving a presentation on nanotechnology, and I had a very nice, like, 30-minute conversation with him. And through that, I was able to determine the experience of a physics PhD, the job, everything about it, I was able to learn. And now I've set my sights on becoming a physics PhD, and my love for scientific research, my determination to get a physics, a physics PhD in the future is all a cause, is all, the Math Science, Math Science Innovation Center is completely responsible for all of this. It's touching not only me, but other students all across the county. I think that this program is important, and funding should not be cut from it so that hearts can be continued, can be touched continuously around the county.
Please.
Real quick, I think we should be within, we had two slots, so.
You're, you're fine.
The, and again, I am Stan Bukowski, and this, we are the Blue Cheese, one of the mentors of the club, and actually the president of the Boosters Club. When we got information about your current budget, you heard from just some of the kids who have been impacted by the Math Science Innovation Center. We're here to advocate for STEM, for you to relook at your budget. The plan not to fund the MSIC will deny access to thousands of Henrico students to a valuable regional STEM education resource. It's located right here in our own county. Why wouldn't we fund something like that? Additionally, the educators in Henrico County will be denied those same resources, which is part of what we should be implementing for these students. What do the city and citizens truly in Henrico County get in return for you doing this? If you truly use it to reduce funds, and that's what exactly is what it said in the email you sent to us, they get less than one full tank of gas a year. For everybody, for every student in Henrico County to lose access to the Math Science Innovation Center and the opportunity to learn STEM in a hands-on way that impacts so many children in our, in our community, because no matter what you try to do in the classroom setting, it will not be the same as what can be done at the Math Science Innovation Center in the hands-on, creative way without the pressures of trying to reach some type of grade or something like that. As leaders of our school system, you need to continue to promote education in the STEM fields, not find, not get rid of something as good as the Math Science Innovation Center to save a few dollars in the average pocket of the Henrico family. We thank you for your time. We hope you will take this into consideration and figure out another way to, to fund that. I am a parent. One of these is my child. I'd happily pay the extra $25 for those computer fees for the kids of today to be able to access what's available at the Math Science Innovation Center. Thank you.
No, thank you, and thank you for, to the others for coming out so far and sharing with us what's been shared with some by email and all. That concludes the list of those folks who have signed up previously. Yes?
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have a moment of personal privilege.
Please, certainly.
I wanted to thank the Blue Cheese kids. I've been to a lot of your competitions, and I know that one of the foundations of your club is advocacy. You've been to DC, you advocate on every forefront that there is for robotics and for STEM education. I really appreciate you all coming to be here today. I did have one quick question, if you would ask it, answer it for me. Your circuitry class and your robotics class, were those taken in the summer?
The circuitry, it was Mount Denver, I told you, with my friends. Right. Math Science Innovation Center. I think either it was a field trip or a class.
But it was like a summer standalone, if that's understood.
I told you it was a summer.
Okay, what about the robotics one?
Both of the robotics ones that I took at elementary school were both going to summer, as well as the ones possibly in college.
Okay, I appreciate it, but thank you all for being here.
Very much so. All right, but that concludes the list of those who have signed up in advance. We have others tonight. Our first is Holly Freeman, and she will be followed by Sharon Jones. So, Ms. Jones, if you want to move down to the front and be ready to go, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you all for coming. I am Holly Freeman, the director of the Math Science Innovation Center. Regardless of what you decide, the fact that students have come out to talk about their experience, that is the work.
They love their robot to come do this.
Thank you. That's big. That is the work. And since you've said everything, almost everything that I want to say, I will not continue with that. I will say, though, that the four cornerstones of your strategic plan will take time, energy, resources to complete. And two of them, the equity cornerstone, let me talk about that one in particular, is what you all are talking about. The equity issue is the issue in Henrico. I was a Henrico student, my daughter was a Henrico student, we live on the West End, she went to school in the East End. This question, this issue, is not about the twelve, or the twenty, or the two hundred, or the two thousand students who get a spot to go to a special school on the other side of town or in a different division. It's for the twenty-eight thousand students that the Math Science Innovation Center impacts from Henrico every year. We are committed to working with students not just from a particular neighborhood, but students come to the Math Science Innovation Center across neighborhoods, across race, economics, experience, to work on meaningful projects, which is part of what you have written about in the strategic plan. Lifelong learning, hands-on learning experiences, those are the experiences that students have Monday through Friday, Saturdays, and also in the summer. You've heard from the students, you have done an eloquent job, so I will read what the division leads have said about the value add of the Math Science Innovation Center and what the needs are in the district from their viewpoint. These are the science specialists, the math specialists, the STEM coaches, et cetera. Now, I have to take my glasses off because I haven't figured out the bifocal part yet. Division needs: project-based learning, cooperative learning, assessment design. Many teachers continue to struggle with successful integration of the scientific process to teach science content. Lesson planning, assessment alignment, twenty-first-century skill development, and it goes on and on. We have quite a bit of data from your division administrators about what the division needs are. The value add of the Math Science Center, in their words, "The educator in residence." We have a grant from both Altria and the Robbins Foundation to provide instructional coaching in schools. We have someone embedded in a wilder as we speak, not just as an extra person in the room, but to work with teachers and teacher teams and school principals to think about what is the need of that particular teacher, and then how can we best support them through looking at student work, looking at case studies, that's yellow. So, that is a program that both superintendents have put their impetus behind, and also that businesses have done as well. Weekday lessons is a value add that your folks are seeing. Opportunities for students to explore their passions more deeply than they might be able to in the classroom, offering high-quality professional development. The MSIC brings hands-on lessons to our teachers and students with resources that teachers may not have access to. MSIC provides additional applications and extensions of content, professional development, and MSIC lessons of professional development support our learning goals by modeling effective and engaging instruction. So, given the fact that, again, your cornerstones will take resources, we are prepared to provide those resources for you, again, across the whole division for the twenty-eight thousand students that we serve. Right, I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for observing the time. Ms. Jones, please. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak tonight, you can move up to the front so you'll be ready to go, too.
Hi, my name is, good evening to you, my name is Sharon Jones. I am an employee of the Math Science Innovation Center. I am a senior account technician there. I'm also a grandmother of two students in the Henrico County schools. In about the year nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and six, I worked at Richmond Public Schools in the finance department. And in working in the finance department, our function or responsibility was to handle the invoices, the checks, the reimbursements, the accounting, and my responsibility was the Math Science Center. So, all I knew about the Math Science Center, in addition to when I was very young, I worked with the four-H group that was at the Math Science Center, I just aged myself, but those were the only things that I knew about the Math Science Center. In two thousand and fourteen, I had the opportunity to come to the Math Science Center as a senior accountant technician. But what the experience did for me is that I understood and learned what I was paying for. Sometimes when you're just paying for items, paying the supplies, doing reimbursements, and you don't really understand the function of a thing, then you don't really understand the concept behind the importance of the Math Science Center. So, when I got there, I learned why I paid Carolina Biological because of the bats that we sent out in kits so that we could have a spooktacular program as a virtual lesson. I also learned why it was important for us to have professional development because we taught teachers and educators hands-on education. I also learned why it was important for me, when I was in the finance department, to schedule flights and hotel rooms for our science fair participants to go to ourself in order for them to compete on a national level. And so, you may be asking yourself, why is that important? Well, the reason I wanted to give you that backdrop is because sometimes we get more, because we see a number, we don't really understand what that number means. And I wanted to come to you from that perspective, that as a budget line at the Math Science Center on your huge budget, sometimes you can lose sight of what that number is all about. That number is about kids who have an opportunity to experience hands-on learning. That number is about kids and educators who are able to come and take tools back to their classroom. That number is about a science sphere that we have, where we can invite students to come in and look at Mars on a sphere. That number is about our Challenger Center, where we're the only center that is in this region that people can come and learn how to go out to Mars. So, the Math Science Center is not just a budget line, it's an experience, and it's an opportunity for our children to learn. And even greater than that, it is an opportunity for our educators to learn skills and tools, to have hands-on experience at the Math Science Center. So, I said all of that to say that I hope that you would reconsider the ability to use funds, to pull the funds away from the Math Science Center, and find another way to make sure that we can supply the things that are needed for the students in Henrico County. And I wanted to just reemphasize that the Math Science Center is also the place where I pay for ladybugs to come and sit in our refrigerator until somebody can take them to use them in the classroom. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Before the next speaker's come forward, I apologize, I've got to depart to get to another location. Reverend Cooper will serve as a chair in my absence. I will go back and listen to all of the comments, they're all being videoed, and I will go back and listen to all of the comments for those who are going to share now, and I appreciate those who have come already. So, thank you, and I apologize again.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. You may approach the podium, and you have four minutes. Thank you so much. Could you tell us your name, if you don't mind?
My name is Elizabeth Lane.
Lane?
Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
I speak to you as a resident of Henrico County, a former teacher in one of your schools, and now I currently work at the Math Science Innovation Center.
Ask for a pen.
When I started my teaching career, I would not have been successful if it were not for the center. The professional development that I received from them at their conferences and their workshops got me through my first few years as a teacher and allowed me to be effective at my job. I didn't receive those resources at my school. I was given a mentor, but my mentor was on their way out for retirement, and I had no one there at my school to help me. So, if it wasn't for those abilities, I would not have been the effective teacher that I was, and I never would be able to work there now. As a teacher, I also brought in the center to work with my students when I was at Brooklyn as a teacher. I can't tell you how much that meant to them. It helped me because it helped me see how these expert teachers were when I was new, and it gave these opportunities to my students. I gave them the flyers, and they went to the weekend programs whenever they could, and they would come back and they would rave about it. And I, too, when I grew up, lived off of the Math Science Center. I grew up in Hanover County, but it was still a very important part of my childhood. And so, when I became a teacher and used them all the time, I couldn't have made it without them. Now that I work there, try not to get emotional, sorry. The looks on faces, I've been at Elko Middle School the last two days, working with students there, and they have been amazed by the things that I have been able to bring to them. We have been doing science and math classes, and it is just eye-opening to them so they can see these applications of what they're able to do. I hate for that to be taken away from them, especially as someone who used to work in your school. I know that accommodations are made, if it's just about that computer fee, I know that accommodations are made when they're needed to be made, and I would hate to see the whole county lose out on everything that the center has to offer for something like that. So, I just please ask for you to reconsider this. I know when I worked at Brooklyn, this was an option, but we were given an option as teachers, as students, to speak out about the center. So, I know this is not the first time you have considered taking it off of the budget. I wrote a four-page letter to you then, or whoever was here then, and my students wrote letters, and you went against that decision, and you decided to keep the funding, and I just really hope that you do that now, because I don't think you understand everything that you would be taking away from the students and the families in the county and the teachers. I know you have new teachers coming in every year in our professional development. I lead a lot of them now, and I work with those teachers. I even work with some of them outside of our workshops. They have my card, they call me, they email me, I help them out whenever I can because I have that ability to at the center, and I just really hope you reconsider. Stop now before I get emotional.
Thank you, Ms. Lane, I really appreciate that. Could you please state your name, madam?
Certainly. My name is Bridget Westhoven, and I'm a multi-year mentor with Blue Cheese Robotics, ten eighty-six. I think the kids did a really good job of stating their own case. From a parent's perspective, I wasn't going to speak, but I'd like to share that I sent all three of my kids to both programs during the year and programs during the summer at the Math Science Center. One of my students eventually ended up becoming a teacher, the other two are studying, are currently in college. One is studying engineering at Purdue, and the other's studying computer science and math up at George Mason. And my experience as a parent is that, as wonderful as a job as our teachers do in the classroom, they are not able to do the kind of individualized, hands-on curriculum that really brings science alive for the students who are the most likely to engage with STEM activities. And we really need to have more opportunities like this, not less. I basically work part-time, unpaid, as a volunteer for Blue Cheese, and the reason I do that is because I've seen the transformative, I mean, life-changing transformation that it makes in students' lives when they have the opportunity to get hands-on, working on coding, working on robots, working on physics, working on all of this stuff. I don't know if one of the kids shared this, but we were all talking at the build site the other day about, you know, what did you study at the Math Science Center? Because all of our kids have taken classes there, whether it's field trips, or academic enrichment, or camps, or whatever, they've all done it, you know, without a single exception. And one of the kids turned to me, he's like, holy cow, I've got a buddy of mine who is studying meteorology in college. He didn't even know what meteorology was until he went to a program at the Math Science Center. I mean, this child changed the course of his life based on one class that he took at the Math Science Center, and that's the kind of opportunity that you would be taking away from all of the students of the county. And I tell people all the time, when I go out and do enrichment activities or demos, and the community will do stuff at the various libraries, or with the elementary schools, or whatever. The only reason our team exists in the way that it does, and we've more than doubled in size over the last three years, is not because of money that we get from the school board, it's not because of money we get from the school that we go to, it's because I work my tail off raising funds that allow us to pay the fees for competition and to buy materials. We get sponsors. Not every school has somebody like me who can spend as much time as I do to do that kind of thing. All of these children deserve to have hands-on STEM activities available to them, even the kids who don't go to Deep Run High School, who have somebody who's willing to and able to make that kind of commitment to them, and they need you to make that commitment to them, that it's worth twenty-five dollars a student, or whatever it is, to have that opportunity available to every single child in Henrico. Okay? And I, like I said, I didn't mean to talk, but I feel extremely strongly about this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Westhoven. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Wright. I'm fourteen years old, and I'm a sophomore at Codar VA Regional High School, and I'm also a member of my home school, which is Deep Run's Robotics Team Blue Cheese, hence the cheese head in the Codar VA T-shirt. And I'm here to ask my school board to continue its partnership with the Math and Science Center. So, schools have access to laptops and smart boards and maybe even 3D printers, but we don't have access to full aquaponics labs, animal labs, the new NASA launch simulator, and lots of other cool science labs that the Math and Science Center offers. The Math and Science Center allowed me to take classes as a kid in nanotechnology, something that I'm still interested in. I remember at one middle school conference I attended, I learned about different water purification processes in less-developed countries. And so, this was really interesting to me because I didn't know how easy it was to determine how clean and pure water is. The Math and Science Center exposed me to advanced math, hands-on workshops, and numerous other Saturday morning programs, all of which I enjoyed. So, the math, these chances give kids a chance to personalize their learning outside of our SOL-specific curriculums and learning experiences in school and in the classroom. No tests, just enjoyment and learning because it's your passion. My younger sister is currently taking the six-week computer science course, and she's loving it. I ask that you continue to give Henrico County students these opportunities by continuing to fund the Math and Science Center. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wright. Yes, ma'am.
Abby Woodard, I honestly was not expecting to speak today. I normally am way, way too nervous, however, this is kind of the effect that the Science and Math and Science Center has on me because for years and years, in elementary school, middle school, and even into high school, I had, like, severe anxiety, so I didn't really do anything, make friends or anything. However, science is kind of, science and math is kind of the thing that, like, I actually did during all of this, especially the science part, is the part that I actually felt like I could make a difference in the world using science. And it just, it expands your horizon so much to be able to, like, learn about this stuff and be like, wow, there is a world outside of my house, outside of my town, and you can do so much more than it actually seems. And also, my mom is a, is a teacher, so she helped a lot in that, like, when I was too depressed, like, leave the house that much. She was a science teacher, she would bring it to me, but like, it's a really great opportunity to, like, continue to, like, learn and have this, like, we, like, a hundred years, or two hundred years, or however many years ago, none of this would be possible. Your world was your town, and whatever you heard on the news or the radio, and now we have these centers and all this, like, stuff that we can learn, and we can actually do stuff with it. And I think it's, I think it's, like, both really important and incredible that we have these opportunities, and I think that very, very important to keep the opportunities that we're providing for students, not only because you're learning, but also because it is expanding knowledge of the world and what you see and your community, and it's just, not really more I can say about it, it's just one of the most incredible opportunities. And to sacrifice that for half-priced computer, I think personally would make me just incredibly, I don't know, the word for it, sad, maybe, disappointed? It's just such a thing to give up for something that I'm not going to say is small, because it's not. It's a computer, it's also a lifeline to the rest of the world, but something that doesn't necessarily provide as much, as much community, as much learning, as much guided opportunities as a program like this does. So, I think it's, I think it's a really important thing that we keep and we keep supporting and sending kids to, and adults even, or whatever, anyone, everyone. So, I think it's just really important, so, yeah.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Alice Thompson. My son, he tends Arthur Ashe Elementary School. I'm the PTA president at Arthur. I'm the PTA president at off the Ash Elementary School, and I appreciate you all, you know, listening to us about the Math Science Center. My son is a third grader at off the Ash Elementary School, and on Saturdays, they have a program called Little Innovators. And I would say he has attended three classes so far, and it's hard to get into those classes. Every, you have to get into those, you have to sign up early, because if you don't sign up early, it won't be a spot for you. Now, when he attends those classes, it is always full, always full, and it's so, so wonderful. Has learned about electronics, he has built a robot at the age of nine, and he's a third grader. Now, I have wrote an email to Vice Press, Vice Chairman Roscoe, and I, again, thank you for allowing us to speak. And I have to read this letter that my husband sent to Mr. Roscoe. May bear with me here. Over the past several sessions, I have been proud to attend the programs with my son. This is my husband speaking. It was also exciting to see the youth, parents, instructors enjoying each session. I have yet to attend a session that was not 100% attendance. Most importantly, these programs show within our county a great interest and enthusiasm for taking advantage of the opportunity to expand an enlightened mind. In a world where competition and innovation ensure our survival, it would behoove me to believe that Henrico County would cut short any opportunity to remain the best in Virginia. Henrico is the best. The foundation of all culture is the youth. Please give our youth the chance to shine. Now, I am an engineer, and I work for Henrico County Public Utilities, and STEM, STEAM is important for our kids in the future, and for you all to cut this short, it would be a shame, it would be a shame. So I hope you listen to all of us, everyone in here who is supporting the Math Science Center. That's all I would like to say.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Juanita Sharp, and I'm speaking to you as a really nice follow-up, as a voice from the future. I'm a former faculty member in STEM universities, I've worked at several universities, and having students exposed to opportunities like those provided by the Math Science Innovation Center were, was just an unbelievable help in getting scholars and students excited about science and to maintain their excitement about science throughout their careers. This exposure is the first step these students on the road to technological innovations, to job creation, and to scientific and health innovations. I'd hate to see this cut short through these opportunities for these students so that we can save a few dollars. I think what the Math Science Innovation represents and presents as opportunities is invaluable and is a wonderful way for these students to ultimately come into my hands as scholars in, at the college and university level. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sharp.
My name is Emily Woodard. I'm a ninth grader at Deeprun High School, and I'm in the Blue Cheese Robotics Team. So I'd just like to start out by saying that I feel incredibly lucky and honored that I, I've grown up in this county. I've been going to, I went to elementary school, middle school, and now high school in this county, and everything that I've been exposed to, not only at the schools, but through opportunities such as the Math Science Innovation Center and different things through this county have just been really amazing, and I think will help me so much in my life as I'm growing up, as I'm learning what I want to do. And the Math Science Innovation Center has been a really big part of that. I think that it's an incredibly important resource of this county, and it's one of the reasons that I feel so lucky and honored to be part of this county. And not only does it provide opportunities for students to learn about STEM, to be inspired, but it also provides opportunities for teachers. My mother is a teacher in this county, and only a few months or weeks ago, she actually went on a field trip to the Math Science Innovation Center with her students. And she came home that day, and she was talking about it, and she was talking about how she felt inspired by the teachers there, by their lessons and their commitment and excitement to help these children, these kids. And you know what inspired me too? And I know that inspired her to go and want to do more hands-on learning in her classroom, to expose these students even more. And so, Math and Science Innovation Center, it inspires these kids to continue to want to learn more about STEM and to seek discovery, but it also inspires teachers to want to be able to teach their students better, to have more hands-on experiences. And even if they might not be able to do everything that the Math and Science Innovation Center can, that's why we have the Math and Science Innovation Center, so that they can reach out and bring their students there, have lessons, and have experienced people in these fields come to their classroom to be able to do this. I think that it's really a question of what is worth more? The experiences and the inspiration that comes from the Math and Science Center, or the cut of the budget of, of the fee for computers? I would really like you to consider to keep the budget for the Math Science Innovation Center, just because it is so important to so many kids, and I want everyone, everyone else coming after me, all of the other children, to be able to be as lucky as I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood, appreciate you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Colon, and that's C-O-L-O-N, say it like you spray it, so that make it easy, right? As a teacher, I put that name on the board many times, so I share with you that. But I'm here pleading with you as a teacher and also a parent. And for one, I'm here as an advocate for the Math Science Innovation Center, and I bet some of you can raise your hand, have you all attended when you were younger, because it's been here for 52 years. It's a place where the north side, the south side, the east side, the west side came together. It was, it's a, it's a place where it didn't matter what your reading scores were, but that you were on board and you could do, that you had hands-on things to work with. With that, also, as a teacher, I share with you that the professional developments have been able to give me that inspiration that you need as teachers need, that fuel, that just that little spark of energy, of enlightenment that you can share with students, that brings them to a bigger, better place. We all know that STEM is, it's science, it's technology, it's engineering and math. As we look into our workforce, we know that we're going to need to enhance our students and make sure that they have these skills. The Math Science Innovation Center is there, has been here, as a shining star of Henrico, being a place where the Metro City Science Fair is, and you guys all know, this year, I know you have your invitations, it's going to be at Miles. And we make sure that you all come and then make your decision. I make, you know, make sure that you all have an invitation to come and walk around, experience the students' work. This was inspired by the teachers who believe in science and also the students that were given the opportunity to actually explore these amazing ideas that they have. There's so many children that apply for this, and this, again, this, just the Science Fair has spun off where we actually get to represent Virginia on a national level. So again, Henrico, because we are right here on your, in your area, and you're probably, you're represented there every year. Couple quick facts, I was going, I'm bringing it out, right? Can read this, right? It's open. Well, I just wanted to share, there is so much, you have Saturday programs, there's enrichment programs, there's things going on in the summertime that students have the opportunity to do, to enhance and get some extra care with. The professional development has, just in one year, has over 1,000 teachers that it's touched. For example, just the Saturday and Sunday enrichment programs, there's 3,383 students that were able to have four to five, well, actually 10 different opportunities to be in front of computers, coding, math, Little Innovators, Discoverers, and also the Richmond Science Fair. We've, you've been here for 52 years. Don't forget, it's an important step. People remember this place, and they, I go out as I advocate and share this information, and people who are 30 and 40-years-old saying, I remember walking through the NASA room. I remember being in the science room that had the spiders, and I was scared. I've been there when they started just using computers and starting to help students code. Again, it's been there, has always been, it's a foundation of your county, don't forget about it. We're here, we're strong, and thank you for your time. Looking forward to seeing you at the Science Fair.
Thank you, Ms. Colon, appreciate you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Comer-Wright, and I am a former full-time teacher, currently homebound teacher, as well as parent of Alexandra Wright. I just wanted to share, from both of those perspectives, my thoughts, you know, I started taking my daughter Alexandra to the Science Museum, probably when she was about, I'm sorry, Science Museum, Math and Science Center, both of them actually, when she was about five or six, and she started asking, how come spiders don't get stuck in their webs? And someone told me there was a spider room, and so that was like one of our first workshops that we did together. And if you haven't seen the spider lady over there, she's absolutely fantastic. But we, over the years, continued doing the Young Innovators Program, I think it was called something else way back then. My, one of, one of my other children are currently taking, Alexandra mentioned, a six-week computational computer science course over at the Math and Science Center, and she's voluntarily going, and she's loving it, and it's from 9:00 to 2:00 every Saturday morning, and she's going. And she loves doing it. And my five-year-old, we just went to one of the parent-children Saturday mornings back in January, and she loved that too. So my younger children are looking forward to doing all of the workshops and the middle school conferences that they were able to see their big sister do and have heard about, and that she brings back cool swag that they envy, and they're looking forward to doing all those things. One of the biggest shames though that I see, and I guess you guys may have mentioned this because we came a little bit late, is that if you discontinue your partnership, the students will no longer be able to participate in the Science Fair, is that correct? You know, that's some of the information that's going out, do you know if that's accurate? No? I was gonna say, because that's a really big thing for our students, right, the Richmond Metro Science Fair. There is a private school Science Fair, but I can tell you as someone who's seen that, it's nowhere near compared to the Greater Richmond Science Fair, with the number of students, and students of much more diverse backgrounds, and they're doing projects on all sorts of things, and they're working with all these great, you know, partnerships and laboratories, and doing all this great work and having this great experience, and they're doing it as public school students, not as private school students with private tuitions, and parents who can then afford to pay the extras that go along with that. So I'm really hoping that as I have a 10th grader who still has two years to continue doing Science Fair, and I've got children who are coming up, that they get the opportunity. And if you discontinue your partnership, that would be a really strong loss, because I know that we've had quite a few children or students in Henrico County that have gone on to compete at the state and national levels. So I think that would be a real negative impact. I would just like to encourage you to continue the partnership. I've enjoyed it as a teacher, I've enjoyed it as a parent, and I've just enjoyed having it in our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Is anyone else that'd like to address us this afternoon? If so, please come forward now. Having no other persons present who'd like to address us, we want to make an announcement in regards to our meeting dates. Our upcoming meeting is February the 28th, 2019, 2:00 p.m. work session, 6:30 a.m. in meeting New Bridge Auditorium. Meeting time for work session may be adjusted if needed. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.